I got it. All right. Lord, just thank you for another day to be able to do the city's business. Help us do, make the right choices and be willing to listen and make the best choice and just help us get through this meeting and it be good. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve amendments and reports as presented? Dumbler and Dodd. Any discussion? All in favor? So moved. Need a motion to pay the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Dodd and Dumber. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Any citizen comments? Okay. Moving on. Chris, do you want to update us on the grant?
So, basically, you all should hopefully. We have done the solicitation for the asbestos inspection and the demolition inspection. Those were due the end of the month, so we have those in. I don't know if you have, if you have those to review to make a decision or if you want us to share those with you.
Yes, if you would share them. I didn't.
So on the demolition inspection, or I'm sorry, on the asbestos inspection, there were three bids that were submitted. I don't know how in-depth you want me to go into the request for proposals. I can share the scope of work with you. Basically, they're, we asked them to describe the approach they'd be taking in addressing the task outlined within this process. Explain prior related experience, management, staffing, and then assign a unit cost for the process. So, kind of gives you a range of qualifications to base your decision upon. In this case, it appears pretty straightforward based on the cost per unit, but in case they would happen to come in at the same cost, you can then look at like past experience. And obviously, you want to consider that as well. You don't want to give it to the lowest bidder if they had no experience or whatever, but. So, I'll just read them in the order that they came in. I think the first one we received was from SCS Engineers. They're out of Overland Park. I guess I'll back this up. So, the requirement is to, since it's a project of less than a hundred thousand dollars, it's not a sealed bid process. It's a, you can solicit directly from the contractors and they can provide you a proposal. DNR has a certified list of asbestos inspection people, so they have to be on that list to be qualified. So, we use that list. There's approximately probably a hundred providers on there. We go through the list. We did it based on geographical, within proximity of the Dyna, you know, closest to further away. We got out about a hundred mile radius and we had more twelve to fifteen, so we built a list of those twelve to fifteen. We sent this proposal directly to each one of them, so they were all, you know, so it was insured to be out there in front of, you know, as many of them as we could. SCS Engineers is, to the best of my knowledge, is not on that list, so I don't, they learned about your project in some other fashion. They were able to submit an application. They're out of Overland, Overland, Missouri. I won't, I can, we can share these with you and give you any additional information you might want, but I'll just kind of get to the nuts and bolts of it as far as the cost. Their cost per residential unit was two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Cost per commercial unit was twenty-eight fifty. So, a total cost for this project of fifty-three thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. And I can, I didn't, sorry, I didn't make additional copies here, but I'll, we can toss these out or you guys can share them around and look at it. The second bid came in from Roberts Demolition and Roll Off out of Hannibal. They gave a pretty, a brief explanation of their processing, how they worked. They've been doing inspections for eighteen years, Shelvinham and Rose City, Hannibal, Moberly, and have actually done some here in the Dyna netlist, so. They say that they can do an average of five to seven units per day depending on ability size and would start within ten days of the award approval if agreeable. Lab time turnaround is three to five days based on, so they have to send these results off to the lab and they'll get results within three to five days. Their cost per unit is three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And that's commercial and residential. And there are twenty-three total properties, so. Have that sound, you ladies, I apologize. I think that's six, sixty-five hundred dollars for the total project cost. And then the final one was from Cleaner and Associates. And I think you guys are familiar with them. Did some work, I think, on your, maybe on your sidewalk project and done some other work for you. They have a cost proposal of thirteen hundred dollars per residential and three thousand dollars per commercial for a total of thirty-four thousand, seventeen dollars for the total project. So, pretty wide. We go all over the place. We got a pretty low one and a, and a. And I can also, I will also share with you just for your knowledge. We, we kind of have a rough idea of what this should cost, so we build that within your budget. So, we budgeted fifteen thousand, so you can kind of compare what we have in the budget to what those bids are, so. If that helps any, I don't.
You say that Roberts demolition outcomes well qualified?
Yeah, they're all, they're all, they're all listed on the DNR certified list, so they're all qualified. They all, they all list within their, their past references and things of that nature, so. Sorry, I didn't pass the cleaner one around there. They don't have a, I mean, if you want additional information from any of them, we can definitely check and get additional references. I know, like, I know the Roberts one there, they just listed the communities they worked in, so. And we were very fortunate. We got three, three bids, and that's kind of the magic number for CDBG. If you don't get three bids, they, they require, they ask you why and they want to review your procurement process and make sure you did everything you could to produce adequate competition. So, I mean, that's ultimately what they're after is to make sure that, you know, everybody here's a governor job, so they bid really high and so they're just, you know, after the, the best bang for the buck.
So, this will be, they'll do the inspection for asbestos and demolition?
No, that's just for the asbestos, asbestos inspection. I got to say that slowly or I'll be on camera saying something I shouldn't, so. And that is required to, we have to have that to be able to complete the environment. That's the last piece they're waiting on for the environmental review is that to come back. And the other piece of that too is, I mean, we can, you can do the math if you need to or want to. The three commercial properties are already, we are, you already have a asbestos inspection report that's been submitted. They have given us every indication that that will suffice so that you wouldn't have to do those residential properties, so. I know they all bid, the other two, the other two entities bid on that, I believe, but.
Is this something we need to vote on tonight?
It's, yeah, I mean, if you, I mean, to move it forward, yes.
Okay. Do you guys have any questions more for Chris or do you have your mind made up?
It's just a matter too is just for document, documentation purposes, you just have to kind of denote why you selected, who you selected. So, I mean, if you can, make sure you, you know, record that in the minutes. Just, just for their purposes, they want to be able to show that, you know, you didn't pick your brother-in-law's bid that was five times higher than everybody else for no reason, so you just would need to. If you go with a higher bid, you just have to explain it.
Do you all have any questions? Any? Any discussion of who you would like? Or you're leaning to more?
I would think the Roberts, if he's done work all around here.
And he is on the state list of approved people.
That's what I was thinking.
So, is that a motion?
I'll make the motion.
To approve the Roberts bid for asbestos? Any more discussion on it? All in favor of approving Roberts demolition? Motion carries.
All right. The second situation is not as rosy, but it's not, it's normal. We did the demolition inspection piece of that, so basically what that is, is they, the step in this process where you have an independent person build the bid specs for the demolition contractors to bid on. So, what that, what that entails is a site visit. They review materials like this, what type of siding there is. They get the dimensions. They get that all built in, build a bid, a bid spec sheet for each individual property. It might entail, like, if there's a cistern or a well or anything like that. And also is a conversation with the property owner to establish, like, some instances, like, there may be a special tree that has to stay or an outbuilding that's not going, is it going or is it not going? Get all that clearly defined within that, that, that process. They, CBG allow, only allows an X number of dollars per property for that. I believe it's four hundred and fifty dollars. They've not adjusted that for quite some time, so there's just not a lot of interest from, from private providers. We used to always be allowed to do that. The RPC used to always be able to do that as part of the administration. We would just provide that. They, they took that out. They require you to go out for bid. Unfortunately, when we do that, we just don't ever really get very many bids, if any. So, we have, we have kind of a working relationship with our, the RPC to the south, Mark Twain. We've kind of just have an agreement in place that if they have a project, we'll bid on their projects and then they'll, they'll bid on ours just so we can get somebody to do them. We, we sent this out again. We had to do the same process. We identified a dozen different contractors. We've had numerous people that have expressed interest in demolition projects, that do demolition work, that maybe haven't done any before, so that they come in and say, hey, we would like to be on your, your list to be, to receive notification when you're doing these things. So, we always include them on this, so there's, there's a dozen different contractors within the six counties that we serve and then the three counties south of y'all to, just to try to, you know, expand it out as much as we can. We're also required to send it out. The state requires you to do women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses and disability. That's, the acronyms are WBE, MEBE, DBE, WBE, MBE and DBE, so. They have a state clearinghouse of listing of prop, of those providers. We, we look in the northeast region. We do a search. If there's anybody on that list that's eligible to do this type of work, we include them and I, there was at least one, if not two, that we solicited. We had no, the only response that you guys received was from Mark Twain, which again, isn't a big surprise. And I can share you, with you, their. So, their proposal was for, I want to say four hundred dollars per unit? Yes, four hundred dollars per unit. And that's the only, the only bid we did receive. It is, or the only proposal we did receive that is within the guidelines of what they allow for that cost, so. I would recommend if you guys are willing to proceed with them that you do that in a form of a motion. What that will require us to do though is then we'll, we'll have to share with CDBG how we procured. They'll look at it and they'll, they'll make a determination. They may make us do it again, which they've had, they've done in the past, but has ended up with the same results. So, we think that they're finally kind of aware of the fact that there's just not a lot of interest in this and so we're very, it's our belief that they'll move forward with this, but I just want to make you aware of that, that that might, that might happen to where we have to send them out again. We may have to go and add twenty or thirty more people to the list. Send them out and see if we get any responses, but considering that, that is the only one that we have and it is within the limitations, it is within that. We budgeted ten thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for this. That, so that's what you have awarded in the grant is ten, and their, their bid would be ninety-two hundred, so it would be eleven, eleven fifty, eleven hundred dollars less than what you have in the budget, so. It's within, it's within the parameters of that and it's the only one that's willing to do it, unfortunately.
Is there a motion?
And I don't mean unfortunately because they're really good at it, so I don't, I don't mean to disparage them by any means. It's just, it's just, it's a lot easier when you have the three or four bids to choose from because then it's very clear that we're picking who we should because it's, you know, they have good references and they're the best bids.
Is there a motion to proceed with Mark Twain regional planning as the demolition inspection? Any more questions, discussions on it? All in favor?
They do have a pretty substantial list of references of projects that they've done, so I mean, it's not like they. We, I kind of preface it as they're doing us a favor, but they have a, you know, they've done this a lot, so I mean. And we've done it a lot too. We just used to always do it for all of our own projects, so for whatever reason, we can't do that now, so. So, the last two pieces, so we, we will, we will pass this on to CDBG. They will make a determination. If, if they're in agreement, we'll do a divarment check on the providers, make sure everything's okay. We should have absolutely no issues with the asbestos inspection, so we should be able to move forward. When that happens, I'll have a notice to proceed. You guys have to sign it. And then we'll, we'll get that to them. We'll get a contract in place with them and then they'll be ready to roll on the demolition inspection. Or the asbestos inspection. Hopefully, the same thing will happen with the demolition inspection, but I'll let you know if CDBG comes back and says, you know, you need to rebid it. We'll do it. We'll jump through the hoops and do it, but. So, the next two phases after this are kind of in coinciding with this. We've talked about this. You have, you have a memorandum of agreement with the state historical preservation office to allow us to proceed even though the commercial buildings are part of a historical district. Part of that requirement is that we, we produce a pamphlet that records the history of that building that can be disseminated within your community, like at the library and here at city hall through the historical society. They require that to be done by a certified historian. We've talked about this in the past. We've, we've wrangled around with them a little bit to see if, if we could do that. They have not, they have not bought my argument that we should be able to do that. So, we, we will do a similar process. We'll, the state historical preservation office is within the department of natural resources, DNR. So, DNR maintains a list of certified historians that can do these types of projects. We'll look through there. We'll try to find the closest ones. We'll solicit them. We had mentioned, I know we had talked, I mean, you have a historical society here. You don't have to be on that list to qualify. You just have to be, sorry. The qualifications, you, you have to have a graduate degree in history or closely related field or a bachelor's degree in, in the field plus some years of experience. So, if, I don't know if your historical society, if whoever is involved with that, if there's anybody there that has a graduate level degree in history, they can potentially do this for you. And all, and all honesty. We, we can build what they need to turn in. It just has to be signed off by them, so, I mean. And I say we could build it. We don't have to really build much because the, the majority of the heavy lifting was done when they did the application to get this property as part of the historic. I mean, all the documentation's already there in that, in that file. It would probably, I mean, and I don't want to oversimplify it because these people may want to do way above and beyond that, but I think to get you through, you could probably cut and paste that document into this document, take some pictures as required and, and suffice. So, if there is somebody locally that you think could do this, that's what I wanted to share tonight. I, I will kind of start soliciting from that list to get those, those, those proposals and those cost estimates in front of you, but if there's anybody that you can think of that might be interested in that, definitely put them in touch with us and we can get them the packet to, to make a proposal. And we talked about, so if, if both of those original bids are approved by CDBG, there's a little bit, a little bit shot, or a little bit more than ninety-six hundred dollars in savings that you had budgeted, so that, that money could be utilized to, to pay for this process, so that. Because our fear was it was going to be super expensive and then that would mean that you guys are going to have the tough decision of we're going to have to take a property off or something of that effect, you know, so. Because you can't, we can kind of move the dollars around within the overall number, but we can't add to it. So, if we have money left over, and the same thing can happen with cost, the, the estimates on the individual properties when we get the bids, some of those may be lower as well, so there may be some, some money there that could be freed up to go over into this. I've never been through this process, so I, I apologize. I've looked to try to get some ideas on cost and there's just not a lot out there, so I hesitate to throw out a number because I don't want to be embarrassed when it comes back ten times too high or ten times too low, so. I, I would think that, that, that surplus that you have just in these two inspection reports that you approved tonight, hopefully, we'll, we'll cover that cost, but I just don't have a good feel for that right now to, to be able to do that. Also, a piece of that that will come out of your, of your overall budget will be, we are, you're required to have a clear title for each property. As part of the application, they put a warranty deed in, they do a consent form and all of that. But before you can spend HUD money, federal money on the actual demolition, they require a clear title which shows that there's no liens on the property. That has to be performed by a, a abstract office. So, we'll solicit for that. I've already reached out to the local entities and got some price quotes on that, so hopefully I'll have all that to be able to share with you. Probably, in all likelihood, probably before the next meeting, we may, I may just give them to you and you all may, may want to review them, maybe even have a special meeting. It's, it's not, I don't want, I don't want you to have a special meeting just for that sake because even if we approve asbestos inspection, it's going to probably take thirty days to get those results. So, the clear title won't take that long to produce and you don't have to have those until the day you're ready to do demolition. So, after we do the asbestos inspection and the demolition inspection, then we have to come back and solicit for bids for the actual demolition and the actual asbestos abatement, which takes, you know, you have to advertise it and it takes thirty days, so there's no rush on, on that title. So, there's no need to have a special meeting, but I can get it to you in time for the next meeting for sure that you can. Because that, that's just pretty much for documentation purposes and just one of the boxes that we have to check. I've seen price estimates on that from, anywhere from a hundred to three hundred dollars per property, so. Two thousand to six thousand dollars ballpark. So, that, that will eat into that, that, that surplus as well, so. But traditionally, our, our cost estimates are, we, we try to build them to where there's some wiggle room, so we, we've never. Everything that I've worked on, we, our cost estimates, the actual bids have come in below that, so there's, there's room there to, to maneuver, to get these extra costs. I know that was a bunch of information, so I hope I didn't bore you all, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them and.
So, after we get all this done and we put it out for bid, don't we have to have a?
We'll have a bid tour. So, so once we get the asbestos inspections back, we'll know what properties have asbestos and we'll require asbestos abatement. And we will get the demolition inspection done and that will provide a bid sheet for each property. We will schedule a, we'll work with you all because it's always, it's generally best if we can have a city representative there that may be able to answer questions regarding utilities or things of that nature. But we'll, we'll schedule a, a bid tour where any, any prospective bidders can come. We can, you know, we can drive them to each property and we, we do that. I mean, we, we work with you, but we kind of, we'll, we'll probably ask you if it's all right to have it here and, you know, whoever wants to can come in. We'll give them a, you know, the ten, fifteen minute presentation and then we'll go out and visit each property and they can ask questions and then they're given an X number of days to submit their bid.
We have to have a public hearing, like a time for citizens to comment?
So, we, we did that, we did that with the original opening of the grant cycle and we will do, you're required to do one at the, near the tail end of that, so we'll have to have a public hearing number two. But that's pretty much after the work's done to give them opportunity to, I won't say gripe and complain, but give public comment to, you know, if there's anything that they're dissatisfied with or. And typically, they're, I mean, there's not a lot of input given. I mean, occasionally, there's, there's that citizen that shows up that wants to compliment you all for the great work you did and thank you for all the hard work you put in to getting this project done, to clean up your community. But it is moving. It's just, the, the historical district, it created a lot of extra that slowed everything down and, and they kind of have it held captive. I mean, you can't do anything until they make their determination and they have this, like, huge cushion of time built into that that they have like, they have no intention to, well, sorry, I shouldn't say that. Very rarely do they reply that they want to participate, but they allow themselves thirty days to respond. Well, usually on day twenty-nine, they tell you that you did something wrong in your letter and you need to resend it. And then you send it and then it starts the thirty days all over again and, and. Which I, I jest. I mean, they have a serious job to do and I, I, I don't mean that. They take it seriously and that's good, you know, because it is important to preserve these properties and everything, so. You know, I think the, you know, the, the point of conflict becomes, you know, it's like, they should be more proactive in preserving them before they get to this stage, you know, and now they're in the way of, you know, your all's efforts to clean, yeah, there's, there's nothing you can do to, to take, you know, to prevent this and. So, yeah, I think the logic would be that don't spend this money on these reports to record history. Spend that money before it gets to this stage and preserve them and buy them and maintain them or whatever, but. And so, you know, I, I'm obviously biased because I'm on the back end of that and, you know, this just gets in our way. They're trying to do this, so. They, they have, they have a purpose and that's, again, I, I don't, I don't mean to be literally, it's just frustrating to us because it does take longer.
I'm confused. I'm sorry. Just to be clear, the state historical society is holding up this project?
No, so the state historical preservation office, you're required to do a section 106 review. That typically goes pretty quickly, but in this instance, there's, there are, since the, the properties on the square are part of the historical district, that requires extra, extra steps, which the, we had to move this to. There's a, there's actually a. there's a, there's actually a national federal office that has to determine whether or not that they want to participate in your discussions on what you're going to do about it. And so you have to send them notification and, and that takes, they have X number of days to respond. So that, that adds thirty to sixty days. And again, like I said, I was kind of making fun of it, but they're just doing their job. So that takes thirty to sixty days. So you're waiting on that and then once you finally get that back, they, they, in this case, they said they don't want to participate, but we had to wait that long for them to tell us that they didn't want to participate. So then we went back to just straight negotiations with the State Historical Preservation Office and the memorandum of agreement that we utilized is, is almost exactly the same as similar communities. So it wasn't real difficult to put that together. It's just corresponding, you know, hey, make these few changes, going back and forth. So it just, you know, it just takes longer than, everybody wants to get this done and, and, and I know that the community members are probably asking you, why is this taking so long? And so I, I apologize because you're probably getting heat over it and it's nothing to do with you all and, and it's just navigating those things is time consuming.
It just added a lot of layers.
Yeah, and that's, and then this, this, we've kind of, I, I'm, I don't know if I'm conservative or I'm cheap or if they're the same thing, but, uh, I've just, you know, it's like, looking at this, it's like, we could do this, you know, we could save this money because I don't want to see it cost a whole bunch and then you guys have to decide, well, now we're going to do one or two less houses because we've had to spend all this money on this report. And so we kind of went through that process, working through it with them, kind of going back and forth. Could we do it? They have to check, they have to ask somebody else and, and they're juggling who, how, who knows how many of these. So it's, you know, it's not, they're not just, I'm not the only one asking them questions, so it takes them a week to get back to you or whatever. And so it just, it just no balls.
How far out are we from being done with that piece, the state historical?
So we have to, we have to hire someone to do that. So that's where we're at, is if anybody regionally meets these qualifications, they're going to be welcome to apply. DNR maintains a list of that, so we will, we will solicit to that there. We typically allow them two to three weeks to respond. Then we'll bring that, probably next council meeting, we'll do this very same thing. We'll, they'll have, probably have the estimates for that and then the, or the proposals for that and the proposals for the clear title searches. They'll be able to make those two decisions and then that will all, that will all be done. We'll hopefully be moving forward with the asbestos inspection. We may even have, I mean, like he said, he could, he could do several in a day and he intended to start within ten days if he was awarded it. So he may be done with it by the next, you know, the next board meeting, so. Um, and this, the demolition inspection is similar. It's not a super, it's not, it's not easy, but it's something that can be done, you know, in a couple of days if they, you know, can allow the time to be here and, and review the property and everything. And we typically assist them, like, I mean, we, you know, if they can't be here, we'll go take the pictures for them and do that kind of stuff, try to just move things along. So our thought process is, is hopefully by the next council meeting, you'll have proposals to accept for these other two deals. We'll, we'll hopefully be moving forward with contracts for these, for the asbestos and the, um, demolition inspection and then those will turn around hopefully within thirty days and, and then we'll have results and then, then we'll be ready to go. Yeah, in January, when everybody wants to get out and do demolition work, we'll be ready to go to, go to bid for demolition work and, um, hopefully be ready for spring, you know. We, if we get the, because we allow, generally allow ninety to a hundred and twenty days for completion on the demolition. So if we, if you, if we were, if we move things along and get them done in February, you know, you're looking, they'll, they'll have to have it done by May, May or June. And then that'll be part of the bid process. You may, you know, we may get bids that saying, you know, we want to do this, but we're not going to, we're not going to pledge to do it in February, you know. We're, we're, we want our ninety days to start April first or whatever, just for, for weather and.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
No problem. Sorry this has taken so long, but it's, and it is, finally, there's, appears to be a finish line off in the distance and it'll be a good thing. We'll get it wrapped up and then we'll probably be back and you guys hopefully have some other ideas, what, you know, what you want to do next. Because the CDBG is available for, for infrastructure, you know, so you can look at streets and, and, uh, other projects and that wastewater and water funding. So if there's some other need that you guys identify, we're happy to try to help you now with that one if we haven't scared you off with all of this.
All right, well, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right. We have two building applications. First one is for Brenda Swenberg Mariner. She's put a garage at nine oh eight Morgan. Two bay garage completed in the winter. I'm not quite sure where this is going to go. Is this by her house?
East of her house.
Okay.
We're joining lock to the east.
Yes, okay. Well, I was trying to figure out where it was to Winheart, but I was over too many blocks in my head.
Oh.
Okay, that makes sense. See if I got any questions about this building permit? Sure, we bear enough. Is there a motion to approve the building for Brenda? Discussion? All in favor? Now we have one for Trevor Smelling at seven oh six Northwest Marion Street. Would be a metal and wood frame. The shovel will be up in December.
A motion?
I second it.
David? All right, all in favor? All right. Peggy?
Okay, that's your monthly financial statements. Do you have any questions on those? Have you done the pre routine? We should start collecting the, uh, real estate of the property taxes in the December. I'm assuming the bills have gone or are going out soon.
Today.
Today.
What are bills and taxes?
As long as you have questions. Everything's pretty routine there. So mainly tonight, I'm needing some guidance for budget on starting to work on it. And my goal is to provide you the information you need to make decisions to determine what you want to do. So this is not something that you're necessarily needing to, um, make motions on and all that kind of stuff. I'm just needing some, okay, what, yes, that's exactly what I want. So I'm going to start with some trivia questions. So minimum wage in twenty twenty-five is thirteen dollars and seventy-five cents. It's scheduled to go to fifteen dollars January the first, twenty twenty-six. Who can tell me what the minimum wage was in nineteen eighty-one? And I picked that because that's the year we moved to Edina. Forty-five years.
Seven dollars?
Three twenty-five.
You're, you're, you're pretty close.
Three sixty-nine.
I know, I, I worked that, I know that.
Three thirty-five, so you were really close.
Oh.
Okay, so let's jump forward, hmm, thirty years to minimum wage in twenty-ten.
Is it eight dollars?
Eight twenty-five.
Somebody get closer.
Seven, no.
That's pretty close. It was seven and a quarter. So you figure it took about thirty years for it to double. And so now fifteen years later, it has doubled from that. So that's what we're working with right now. So let's look at tax rates. So the general fund tax rate for twenty twenty-five is point seven four one five, so essentially seventy-four cents. We do get another, um, point one four eight three. For, our total is eighty-eight ninety-eight. For the general fund, essentially seventy-four cents. So my question is, what was the tax rate for the general fund in nineteen eighty-one?
Well, the way taxes have been. I don't think it's probably went up that much.
So seventy-four cents now.
I'll say sixty-five cents.
Anybody else want to guess?
Seventy cents.
Anybody else want to guess?
Twenty-five cents.
You're hitting closest. It was, which one do you want?
Her take is payday.
You can swap. Okay, um, so nineteen eighty-one, that's when we came to them. So let's jump to the tax rate for the general fund in twenty-ten.
Double, our fourteen probably.
I'm done guessing.
Seven point two two five.
So we're a dollar in nineteen eighty-one for the general fund. Give me a guess, Elmer.
Eighty, eighty cents.
You're pretty close. It was actually seventy-five cents.
Wow.
So actually.
We're going down.
Actually, we are going down. Okay. So which city in Knox County had the lowest tax rate for the general fund in twenty twenty-four?
Edina. I did some homework. We have the lowest tax rate.
Wait a minute, I want to know reasons.
I'll share with you.
Okay. So in the general fund, Edina was seventy-five cents in twenty-four. Bering was eighty-six cents, Herden was ninety-five cents and Knox City was a dollar. And that's just in the general fund. So we had the lowest rate of all the cities around. And obviously we have a higher assessed valuation, but our, our tax rate has actually decreased in the period of time that I've been here. Last question. What services does the city provide?
What services?
From the, you mean from the general?
We've got our tax money, we've got our tax money that we have to work with.
So from the general fund?
Well.
Or just all over?
Just the tax money that we use, what do we use it for? What services are we offering?
Police department?
Fire.
Fire.
Water.
Trash and water, we actually collect fees for.
Right, yeah.
Police and fire.
Okay.
Streets.
Good.
City hall.
City hall, yeah.
Good.
Parks.
Very good. I only got one left, Margaret, my head's out of that.
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, parks is one we forget about. Uh, how about our streetlights?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, streetlights.
Okay, and we do other community support things like the community center and four H and, and we try to support activities that are going on in the community. We've done things like stocking the lake and we also maintain the, the lake, so. Okay. So the first topic of discussion that I need some guidance on is we just got through talking about what our minimum wage is going to next year. So we need to look at the salaries. And in a discussion with Roger, he said he and Mike are content where they're at, but they would really like to see, uh, their two full-time people taken care of. And Margaret just said the same thing. She said she's content where she's at. My suggestion is with Kathy is that we get, the minimum wage is increasing a dollar twenty-five and that would be a reasonable amount to increase hers, my personal suggestion. Are you comfortable with that? Any, any comments or?
I'm just kind of amazed that for every dollar an hour increase, your figure there for every dollar that you raise somebody that over the year, that's twenty-three hundred dollars extra, just giving somebody a one dollar raise.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money. I mean, it's not just.
It, it adds.
It's not just a dollar.
Yeah. But we need to know what that cost is.
Yeah. But it's necessary.
How do you make up for that?
That's a good question.
That's why we're always going backward because there's no way, it's going out faster and it's coming in.
Well, and, you know, just like your personal budget, if you don't have more income coming in, you have to adjust your expenses. Some of the expenses we don't have any control over or much control over, like our health insurance takes significant jumps every year, our poverty insurance, our liability insurance, you know, all of those we have to have, they take significant jumps every year. We do have the ability to increase our charges for the services we provide because we should be charging what it costs us to produce it. So in, in the water sewer sanitation, we do have that ability. But in that area of taxes, we don't. You know, after the last meeting, I discovered that, you know, when tickets are issued by the city, all that money goes to the county. And so I started doing some research, because I've been doing this for over thirty years and I did not realize that. I knew we never had any income from the police department. And so I started doing some research, what are other cities doing? You know, how do they fund a police department? And it's coming from general fund. So, um, that's what they're doing. Class four cities can also put a sales tax on the ballot for police and fire up to fifty cents. I personally don't believe that our businesses or our taxpayers want us to do that. I think they would rather see us manage well, what we can. I, for me, that would be a last resort personally, the way I feel about it. You know, we want our businesses to succeed and, um, raising taxes for people is, is not the way to do that. I looked into grants, um, and I found that there were none available for salaries at the city level. Those were available at the county level. There are grants out there for training and for equipment and I think we have applied for those in the past. So that's out there.
So the healthcare, do you send that out for bid every year to take bids on different healthcare providers?
I don't believe we do, but that is, um, that is something we would need to discuss further. And, and the reason being is, I, I've done that in the past and we ended up with an insurance company that didn't pay anything. So we've always tried to take care of the city employees in that area, even though the cost has just continued to decline. But, but that is something that can certainly be discussed. So, okay. So kind of back to where we were, um, Michael and Ty are both sewer of water, so it's not coming out of tax money. Just so we know where that's coming from. So I'm going to just ask if anybody's brave enough to.
What kind of, where do we think would be competitive for Michael and Ty?
Well, Roger says they're doing a great job for the city. They're working together well as a team. Obviously having them at two dollars more an hour than a minimum wage person. Obviously, having them at two dollars more an hour than a minimum wage person is not a good way to treat our employees.
You guys have any thoughts of what a effective compensation would be?
It's, it's three bucks an hour.
Thank you.
Eventually, we're gonna lose you.
Yep.
And we gotta remember Roger's gonna retire one of these days, so we gotta, in essence, take care of Roger to get people in place that can take over.
One more year. You got him for one more year.
Anybody else got any other ideas for a raise or?
And like I said, you don't have to vote on this tonight, but this is what some information is for, for next meeting.
So to compensate for the, so it'd be like a six-dollar-an-hour raise, which would be, that would equate to like eighteen thousand, no, twelve thousand dollars more in that budget that would have to be somewhere. Would we have to look at raising the water and sewer rates?
I wanna know more about that after, um, I have not sat down with Roger, or with Mike, and I'm gonna need their input before I can really say that. And I should have more information as to where we stand on that.
It'd be interesting to see where we are compared to other cities our size for water and sewer.
That doesn't really intervene to it? What other terms charge?
It's really, it's really what our costs are because
Yeah.
We've actually been very, very fortunate and we got a large grant for our sewer project. And we also had prepared ahead of time. This is one of the reasons we got the grant is because we were, we were well-funded. We were taking enough in to cover our cost and prepare for the future, which is what they were looking for when they, and so very few grants were actually offered that year, and we got one of them.
Right.
And we were very, very fortunate in that because of that, we have bonds that we're having to pay, so we had that cost built into our sewer, which is why our sewer rates are a little higher. However, because we were well-funded, we were able to fund one of the funds, so we don't have to transfer money, which would have made it go even higher. So, um, water sewer sanitation really is based on what's our cost to produce it. And having the, the employees that can do the job, you know, Michael is licensed in water, Mike is licensed, um, having qualified people is important.
You go ahead.
For the quality of our. Yes, you really do.
So does our guys pay anything for their healthcare? Or is we just provide a hundred percent?
We pay a hundred percent of it.
Because that's worth a lot.
It is worth a lot.
Yeah, it is there.
So does anybody think like a three-dollar raise would be fair? More or less?
I think it'd be fair, I'm sure.
I just like, I don't know where, where I get it from.
Well, let me work that back for the budget for next month and then let's revisit it. Fair enough?
Fair enough, yeah.
Okay. Okay, you're next, the next page is, um, this is just in preparation for what we're doing. I wanna make sure that as a, as a council, that you know what our sources are and where they're going and the things that we are required to do and the things that we have choices on. So our real estate and our personal property taxes, you've got the rate there that we've already talked about, this is collected by the city. The seventy-four cents is going into the general fund and we get just short of ninety thousand dollars a year for that. The streetlight amount, um, that is required to go into the streetlights is the point one-four-eight-three for a hundred dollars of assessed valuation, and we get about eighteen thousand dollars a year. Railroad utilities is collected by the county, it's, it's the same rates as above. Same percentage goes in there, totals about sixteen thousand a year. Our sales tax, and this was voter-approved in October of seventy-eight. That's one cents, I think, I think I forgot to get that on there. And this is a council decision, in the past, we have gone with the general fund twenty-five percent. We were really needing the funds in street maintenance, so we put fifty percent in there. We use, um, twenty-five percent of it for capital improvements. So our, our larger purchases, we take, um, is twenty-five percent and the breakdown on what we get for sales tax. And the local use taxes included in that, and that was approved in April of, of twenty-eighteen, half a cent. Those are collected by the state of Missouri and then passed on through. American Fran, Amren, I'm sorry, franchise tax. This was originally in streetlights and the street, the special light fund just kept growing and growing. And so back in twenty-ten, um, we took it to the voters and we moved money out of there because we were needing street work done, we didn't have any money in streets. So we moved the, the Amren franchise from the special light fund, streetlights, to, uh, the general fund. And that's about fifty-five thousand dollars a year. This is one thing I would like for us to make a change on this year because we are transferring money every year in order to cover our lights now. So I would like to see us take twenty-five percent of this and put it back into the special light fund. So we're funding our without having to make any tax increases.
Yeah, right.
Or requests. So I will head that way in, in the budget unless I hear otherwise, okay? We, uh, the telecommunication franchise, we're also putting in the general fund, that's about fifteen thousand dollars a year. The wheel tax is a, is collected by the city and that goes into our street maintenance fund. The gas tax refund is collected by the state of Missouri and that goes into our street maintenance fund. Cigarette tax goes into our recreation fund, it's about two thousand five hundred a year, that's about half of what we used to get. Which is a good thing, that means less people are smoking, but it also means we have less money funding our recreation fund. The gas franchise tax, we place in the capital improvement fund for our long-term purchases. The transportation tax, which, uh, was voter-approved, most of you remember that, has really made a significant difference in what we've been able to do with our streets. And we really appreciated voter-supporting that. And I don't think anybody questions that our crew has done a great job using this money on our streets. So that is just for street materials, and we're getting about ninety thousand for that. For the next year, we have three grants that I'm aware of. The demolition, which we just talked about, and we have the city match portion on that, which will be collected from the properties, the different units. Sidewalks, we have a nice sidewalk grant this year for next year, and our city match is gonna be twenty-eight thousand on that one. And then we have that solid waste management for the recycling. And have I missed any of our grants?
I don't, I think.
Pretty well there. So that, that will be a significant help for next year on, on a number of things. Any questions on this? Okay, that'll kind of shorten our stuff next time because I kinda wanted you to, to be up to know where that was at. So last time, you had asked for a breakdown of our safety expenditures and the percentages there. So that first is your breakdown, the percentage of our expenditures that are going to police fire and nine-one-one. I also did a breakdown on the police department so you could see what the wages were each year, um, benefits, insurance, other police expenses, which will be dues and gas for vehicles and all of that type of stuff, and then capital outlay. You can see with, with one police in the apartment, our cost was about seventy-five thousand dollars, well, over seventy-five thousand, I would guess, by the time we add the benefits in. So I don't think at this point we need to discuss the, I mean, we see the minimum wage, what it was and what we were paying our police officer in the past. My son, who was a police officer, basically said, I'm not gonna find somebody for that.
Yeah.
But the thing I want is you see is down below, um, this is what the actual property taxes collected for twenty through twenty-four, we haven't collected them for twenty-five. So what's collected for twenty-five is what we'll use in twenty-six. But you can see that this is all of our real estate property taxes and every bit of it, plus some additional funds are being used for police department expenses. Just so you kind of know where things are. So I'm gonna step out and just make a suggestion. I'm gonna suggest as a council that you meet with the city attorney and that you discuss what the class four, uh, city's requirements are for police and the duties under the Missouri statutes. And the city attorney had advised you to wait on making a decision to hold off on the police department and, uh, check with them and see if those issues have been resolved or if, or if there's still concerns out there that need to, to be resolved. And the other thing is discussing procedures for educating the community regarding the use of the nine-eight-eight for mental health issues. The nine-eight-eight number is fairly new, it came in, uh, in twenty-twenty-two. They do have mental health professionals available for people to talk with. It's not realistic for us to expect our police to have, I mean, they're not mental health professionals. And, um, they shouldn't be expected to, in my opinion, to do that. I think Naomi did a really good job last month of defining what an emergency is and what is not an emergency. And if we looked at the listing in the paper of the nine-one-one calls, there might have been a handful of them that were emergencies. And so I think with the attorney that maybe you need to discuss some procedures for, um, how we can educate the public as far as what the nine-one-one number is for. And also educate on the nuisance laws, which are already there, um, mental health, domestic disputes are not emergencies and they should be called through another number, not through the nine-one-one. So maybe working with legal counsel, we can, okay, how do we educate people? And once we've educated them, then warnings, and then after the warnings, then, okay, this is, this is what the penalties are for that. And it's up to a thousand dollars, you know, you could end up in jail over it, you can be evicted over it, um. And there's a really good reason for that, is because if personnel are being tied up for things that are not emergencies and there is an emergency, then there's nobody there. So the, the laws have been put in place for a reason, so my suggestion is you, if you discuss those with an attorney, kind of get a plan for that and educating in what our procedures should be for the nine-eight-eight as far as referring them because, um, it's, you know, there were a hundred and sixty-eight hours in a week. And I did not realize that Ryan was working maybe forty-five hours a week plus doing on-call. And that is a totally unfair expectation of anyone. And we don't wanna put somebody in that position again in the future. Okay, I have one last thing that I wanna discuss with you and, um, that is the capital outlay, the sheet. The water department, the sewer department, I'll talk to Roger and Mike about, and Mike, I would fund that chip, sanitation. But this is what we had in the budget last year, uh, we know we're gonna have, you know, we had the grant for the police truck and equipment, this, this, so. We probably need to apply for that again, and if we can get it, then we'll, we'll do the batch that's required. So if we can look towards that. We know we're gonna have to have the solid waste grant match there, we're gonna have to have the sidewalk match grant there, um. Roger, did we spend anything on the country club last year?
No.
Okay, so we had thirty thousand set aside, so in the past, that's still there. So we can add another ten thousand to it or whatever you choose. My main thing is if there's something that we need to get on here, would you let me know? You don't have to do it tonight. But I would appreciate if you would give me a call and send a message to Margaret if you want to or whatever. So is there any questions about? All of that, sorry, it was so lengthy. Hopefully, it'll be a little shorter with the budget next month.
Are we starting to put away anything to paint the water tower in another thirty years?
That's part of what I will look at when I pull the budget together because yes, we always, you always have to have reserves on hand, you know, because what we're collecting this month, you know, is what's being paid in the future. And, uh, so yes, I, I will look at that because we always have to have that. And there has to be a, um, a balance, a reserve balance in any fund that has salaries. You know, if something happens, we've gotta have those salaries. So we've always gotta have some reserve funds available. But yes, we also have to set aside for future large costs, we do that with the sanitation, with the truck, you know, five to seven years. We should have enough money then to buy or replace our, our vehicle, so, good question. Donnie, I know this is probably the first time through for you with this kind of stuff. She's very, and I appreciate your question.
Call her and talk to her.
Yeah, okay.
We've had several discussions explaining this to me, I don't understand.
Peggy. Can I have a copy of that packet?
Roger?
Just tell her, what's her landfill deal for the car?
I, I was asking Margaret, we haven't heard of any increases. I I was asking, Margaret, we haven't heard of any increases.
Now, last year, it was about seventy-five, about thirty.
Seventy-seven or something like that. Seventy-seven or something like that.
Yeah, it was outrageous.
Okay. I didn't give you a chance to get any candy.
All right, I'm good.
And we give it back, but then that's what we were talking about.
How's your Christmas tree going?
I think the only thing I didn't have was that list, uh, the capital improvement stuff.
Nope.
Capital projects.
You gave it to me on a different day?
If, yeah. Yeah, I don't think I have.
Any questions, Beth?
I'll catch up with you later. I don't
Old truck ready to go?
There. We checked antifreeze in them and not all of them, it's not good. Chicago, they're all good now. We checked them all and they're ready, so. We're starting to put greater blades on today, getting ready for the winter project. Uh, the Christmas tree deal, uh, Les won't let have a truck go in there because it's raining, which is understandable. And I think there's another feller who's getting involved, and he will put up a light tall tree from the ground up and not have to put them in the tree. So that may happen, because I, if we can't get in there, it'll it'll be a while. Period. So that's where we're at on the Christmas trees.
What you're looking at, I talked to you earlier about those street decorations, like the hang-up on the light.
Those will be up this week, probably.
While it's still nice and warm this weekend.
Yeah, they'll probably probably go up. When you hear birds, it'll probably.
I was looking for the Christmas tree.
Oh.
But I don't see.
Got them all repaired, got them pretty nice. Did a lot of work on last year.
We done a lot of bulbs last year, and we was careful when we put them up, so.
Didn't want to do that again, huh?
No.
So, Roger, tell me again about the Christmas tree for this year.
Uh, courtyard, but can't get in, it's gonna rain, it's soft, our truck's too heavy, it'll kind of rot. So
It may freeze up directly.
That could be, but I don't think it, yeah. So, it, because it'll take a while to do it, and another feller wants to put one up, uh, from the ground up, and thinks it'll be just as nice as the other one.
So you've talked to Dr. Lisa?
Uh, Dr. Lisa's informed about it all, yes.
Okay.
Yes, she's informed.
I wanted to know what this
Yeah, that's what, he didn't ask her, but uh, me and Les got around and talked to her, and she knows.
Okay.
So who is it?
Can't say yet.
So someone else is gonna put up a different tree that's not a courtyard tree for this year's magic tree?
It's gonna be in the courtyard, the way I get it, but you don't have to have he's got a different way to do it, he's got a different way to do it, so that's all I, that's all I know. I told him if he needed help, we can help him do that, so.
Do you know if Michael has been to any of the Clarence Cannon water meetings?
I'm not sure. Has he?
Well, Rick is our
I don't know. He said he was going to, but
He's our person, but
He talked about doing it, but I don't know if they ever went and done it.
I have not been in
He might have been.
Well, we need to go, because there's an issue, like, in this area that there's some towns that's not letting anybody build anything new, because there's not the water supply.
Yes.
So there's stuff going on with water.
Yes.
And we need him to be involved at those meetings, so we know what's going on.
Okay.
So, if Michael's are alternate, I need to be getting this information to him too. I pass it to Rick, because he's our
We need to strongly encourage him to go.
Yeah. Yeah, I will.
Yes, I think it's important that we know if we don't want anything to happen with our water supply.
But if we go on, we're gonna have to leave here, leave there at nine o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it's
Or you have to go for it.
At um
It's down at Stoutsville, the meetings.
And where's Stoutsville?
Well, it's an hour and fifteen minutes drive.
Yeah. It's down by, uh, we go through Perry, I can't think of a old town there.
Yeah.
San Diego.
If you're in the evening, it'd be all right.
Yeah.
About a clock, you spend the whole day down there.
Anybody got anything else for Roger? Well, it's looking amazing. It's been a good job.
I think, uh, I figured up sixty-five blocks, maybe left. Uh, I think we done forty, what did I tell you, Echo, forty-two, forty-five?
Forty-two.
Forty-two blocks this year, and we're gonna try to get direct them next summer. So we'll be close.
I know where you put tubes in looks really good. C and R, down there by C and R, that looks really nice, down there where you fixed all that stuff.
Yeah.
You done a lot this year.
We
Back streets too, busy.
We was busy. Very good year. We did.
Yes, you did.
Yeah.
You did.
Need one more of them and be good.
So, we had anything else for Roger?
We went around some other towns, just to look, just to let you all know how they do stuff. And he was gonna paint oil on them, and these guys here that I've taught how to do this, they've learned what not to do, and we've seen a lot of it when we went to certain towns.
Yeah.
If it didn't stick, it was not good. It it really wasn't, it was, it was, it was not good. So they was amazed, because they had never seen the difference, because I had looked and found that type of doing. Look at these, look at yours, completely, completely different. So
Well, it's good that they see that.
Yeah, it is.
You guys are racist, so I know what they want in North Carolina to do.
Yeah, and they're, and they've caught on to it all, so they are proud of themselves, they call themselves the A-Team, they're, they've caught it on, so they're, they about know they're pretty good, they're knowing what they're doing now.
Good.
So.
Thank you. You got anything else?
I don't.
All right. Naomi's not here, and she didn't leave her report.
Hello. Uh, this is can make this quick. Um, you remember, we talked about law enforcement last month, um, I just wanna, uh, I just have a couple more questions for this meeting. Um, at last month's meeting, the council said no one had been hired since the chief resigned, I I think it was roughly July twenty-eighth of this year. Rick, you said there's no money, Peggy said that's not completely accurate, dot. You said you were advised, the city was advised by the lawyer to wait for one to two months before advertising the chief position.
Oh, Stacy said that.
Oh, Stacy. Linda, you reported the choice not to advertise, the full-time chief position was made after talking to, uh, people you knew in law enforcement, determining no one wanted the job. I just want to clarify tonight for the record, and just go around the table and ask each one of you to answer. And so the question is, do you intend for the city of Edina to keep its police department and fill the chief and/or a full-time officer position, or to limit, eliminate them entirely? And then when you answer, if you could just also let me know how many, if you've had any feedback from citizens about law enforcement, you know, since roughly the same time the chief resigned. So, I think Rick, since you're on the left, we can just go clockwise and go all the way around the table and have everybody answer, so that, do you want to hear it again?
I don't know.
Hear it again.
It's hard, I'm concerned, I don't know that we all need to answer individually. It's a, it's a council, it's a one-answer situation. I mean, we all, you know, we all offered what we knew last time.
I just want to get, you know, you're all individually elected public officials, so I would just like to know what each one thinks, that, you know, we get run over a lot, and just, so anyway, I'd just like to clarify from everyone, so, I mean, do you intend to keep? Let me read it again.
Do you intend for the city of Edina to Have a discussion with the attorney as a council? Because I think there's a lot of confusion as far as what's expected. And I think I'm not an attorney, but an attorney can interpret what the statutes require for class four cities. And I think you need that information before you can really answer that.
So
I agree.
I just give you the opportunity to also not answer the question, that's, that's, um, that's okay too. Answering the question isn't making a vote or making a final decision, I just would like to know. I've talked to a lot of, you know, people who live in Edina about the topic, and so I just want to know where the council stands.
Well, I think we need, like Peggy said, we need to talk with our city attorney and get the right parameters and the responsibilities and requirements, so we know how to go forward and what our options are.
Do you all feel that way?
Yeah, that's all we do.
I haven't had anybody come talk to me, I've seen a lot of stuff on Facebook, which is not where we need to be discussing this. Um, not one person shows up at a city council meeting where they can ask the questions of the people that know, so.
No one has come into city hall and asked or anything about
There's a lot of stuff put in the paper, I mean, I mean, that's the county, but really
But as far as people, feedback from people, no. I have not had one person contact me about anything related to the police department. But there's a lot of stuff on Facebook that's not true.
How about the rest of you? Not have anyone? I mean, last time, we talked about this, and it was, you guys had been contacted, mostly people wanting to know
I probably had one or two people approach me. The question to me was, should we come to city council? I said, sure, you should, and you should bring as many people as you can, and
And you can see how many people shows up.
No one.
It's easy to get on Facebook and complain, but to make yourself visible, if you have a legitimate concern, nobody will do that. And we can't govern Facebook. You can't base your opinions of everything and how people honestly feel up Facebook. That's just my opinion.
There have been some, I've I've had some disturbing reports myself. I did speak to a woman who had a I would say burglary slash vandalism with property damage just this week, actually just last week, not even a week ago, and I saw her um, at lunchtime the next day, and asked her if she had called it in, and she said no. And uh, when I asked why not, she said, I didn't think anyone would do anything.
Well, see, that's just, how do you know no one will do anything when you don't report it?
And then
We're not given the chance to do anything.
So there was that, I've I've talked to a number of people who have begun arming themselves, because they don't feel comfortable. Um, I've got a list of about four right now that I might work on some type of
I would, I would be interested how
I would say it's more disturbing than
Crime and garbage has went up compared to what we had six months ago.
I'm not exactly sure how to answer that, because if we're having situations where crimes are happening and they're either not getting reported, or no one's responding to them, I don't know about how to track that.
That building, how long had that damage been done before they noticed it? I mean, you can't blame all this because we don't have a full-time police officer. You could have been sitting on the corner a half a block away from that, and that would have still happened. So, people get it in their head, if we just had a police chief, it's not gonna be twenty-four seven coverage. So, to blame all these problems because we don't have a full-time police officer is not fair.
I don't think anyone, I didn't blame this as a problem, I'm just
The comments on Facebook, if we had a full-time police officer, this wouldn't be happening.
Haven't seen that one yet.
And that's a lie.
One, one other question is, if these people have problems, why are they going to you instead of Naomi or calling in here and saying they've got a problem? Why, why are they going to the paper instead of someone that might be able to take care of it?
I think for, for that burglary slash vandalism situation, I think I approached them. Um, speaking of Facebook, there was a situation, it's been a while now, over a month, where one resident had a burglary vandalizing property damage, and they put on Facebook, uh, instead of going to law enforcement at all, they put on Facebook
Did they come in and file a complaint?
Uh, whatever it was that they had go on, and, you know, turn yourself in type of thing. And so I, I thought that was interesting as far as
Again, they never gave it a chance to be solved by the police. So, to blame the police department is not fair. You're not even giving them a chance. And we figured it out, to have twenty-four seven coverage like everybody expects would take a minimum of seven full-time employees. A minimum.
What did Peggy say, it was a hundred and sixty-eight hours a week?
It would take seven to have twenty-four seven coverage, a minimum of seven employees, and that is not realistic.
Just from looking at the Edina data, because I have a listing of like how many officers we've had, and, you know, over the last five years, and it, it went from four to three to two in twenty twenty-three to one in twenty twenty-four, and there's, um
When you say four, though, one of them made like less than a thousand dollars.
Eight hundred dollars, or, yeah, they were just kind of looking on call.
That's not a fair comparison.
Um, and just from working the beat and knowing
Did you look, Ron, how many people live in Knox County on population?
We have about thirty-seven hundred living here in Knox County.
In the, in city limits, that's where the tax has gone for the police department.
Here in Edina, we have about a thousand.
And if you go back
About a quarter.
So many, I mean, three thousand, four thousand when I was in high school. Every year it levels down, and you know where all the money comes from? Personal property taxes is what we function runs off of. So if you take a little half of the money away, you don't have no money. So you have to cut back.
Yeah, I think it's nuanced.
And if the citizens really, really want it, the taxpayers really want it, they can put a petition forth and say, we want this on the ballot to have a fifty cent sale tax increase.
Yep.
But that's up to them, if that's something they really, really want another officer.
And I think taxes high enough, it is.
Have any of you guys looked at the ordinance, the, the city ordinance that established the Edina Police Department? And the rules that, uh, you know, whatever the guidelines, the city ordinance it put into establishing
You looked at Missouri statutes as far as what you're called for class four cities?
Mm-hmm, I did today.
Says to enforce the ordinances of the city.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Like in a county, why don't Barron have a police officer? Why don't Knox City have a police officer? Why don't Knoll City have a police officer? Why New York, why don't they all have a police officer?
These are all counties roughly a hundred people or less, right? I don't know the answer to that.
Well, I mean, everybody wants the county to take over, you know, maybe they need to step up and get a police officer, help the county out. There ain't no money there.
Um, okay, I didn't want to take like a super long time, and I was just gonna say one more thing, you know, before what I'm seeing is kind of pivotal for Edina law enforcement as a story on, you know, like the storyboard with the what the paperwork says is basically we had two full-time Two full-time in twenty twenty-three, which was David and Ryan. We lost David at the end of twenty twenty-three and then he wasn't replaced. And then Ryan did an enormous amount of overwork. Uh, which is what probably led to his burnout, honestly. Uh. So that's another kind of nuance that I noticed, you know, in just looking at the, the da- the raw data.
Didn't you say you guys advertised for police officers in Beggins?
Worried, yes.
And there was.
That was never a financial decision. The council gave him permission to hire somebody. We advertised, he did not find anything. Same problem the county has, finding somebody to fill that position.
You can't do it, there, nobody out there.
That has the qualifications that we want has been the issue. Same, same issue the county's facing.
I get that, yeah.
If they can pay more than we can and they can't find somebody, then we're being judged because we can't find somebody?
Uh, I think the county is in the process of trying harder to find someone. I don't know that Edina could reach the limit that, uh, Knox County is offering twenty-five dollars an hour right now. For a full-time deputy, it's a fifty-four thousand dollar a year job. I don't know if that's got overtime, um, built into it, but that's new. And that's, um, so that's brand new, I mean, that's in the, that's just something that. Um, we learned about at the end of last week. And I don't know the answer to that, if that's gonna help or not.
Well, we would welcome suggestions from the community of ways to finance a police department. And finding a quality person, we would love that.
Do you guys have a timeline on like when you wanna get this kind of? Done in the rearview as far as make a decision on law enforcement and the police department? Do you have any?
We just have to talk to attorney. We'll see what she says. That's what we've been waiting on. Then decide on what we're gonna do to find one.
Okay, and then just before I stop, just to be clear, is there anyone that wants to answer the question or is everyone a?
I think we need to get our parameters set before we make comments on what we can or cannot do. And which way you're gonna look and, and what, what can we, what do we have to have according to state statute?
Yeah, and there is a state statute.
Our current officer is responding to all calls, all reports. Uh, you know, when people contact this way, she's addressing them.
Okay, thank you.
I think she's doing a good job.
The first one is on at seven thirty-two. For noxious weeds. This ordinance amendment is to change the penalty structure. And just it's. Failed, if they have been notified and they failed to correct and evade nuisance within ten days following the notification, then under this circumstance. He said owner or occupant are in violation of the ordinance and guilty of an infraction and subject to a fine. Determined by the court upon conviction of not less.
Supposed to read the title.
Or have to make the first reading?
Just, this is all I gotta read?
I'll make the motion.
To, to read by title only.
Okay.
And so, yeah, that's the only part.
An ordinance amending prior ordinance number six nine zero.
Dot made a motion, and so somebody used the second.
I second.
Okay.
David. Now I have to read this?
Yeah, and now.
By title only?
Yeah, by title only.
An ordinance amending prior ordinance number six nine zero to provide for improved fee structure. To allow a more orderly prosecution and adjudication process in cases of repetitive violation. And further providing for the ratification and reenactment of all other terms, conditions and provisions set forth. Within said ordinance number six nine zero. Is there a roll call vote to approve this? Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yep.
Donny?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Is there a motion to have a second reading by title only?
I second.
David?
David, and now do the roll call vote. And then later we'll read.
So I just have to do the vote and then read it again?
Yeah, yeah, you should have, because if somebody doesn't wanna pass it, you know, they make the motion as a second. And then they could vote, no, they don't want you to read it.
Okay.
They don't wanna move forward.
Okay. Never done this before. Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Okay, now I'll read it.
Yeah, now.
An ordinance amending prior ordinance number six nine zero to provide for an approved fee structure. To allow a more orderly prosecution and adjudication process in cases of repetitive violations. And further providing for the ratification and reenactment of all of the other terms, conditions and provisions set forth. Set forth within said ordinance number six nine zero. Did, so do they need to vote again on it?
Uh, so now you're just gonna ask.
Okay, is there a motion?
Shall the bill?
Shall the bill pass?
And we need a motion of second.
A motion.
Rick?
Rick?
I'll second. Stacy?
Now roll call vote.
Okay. Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
Rick?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
So.
Go.
One of them is approved then.
So we only have to read twice.
Thirty-two.
Okay.
Make the motion that she has a first reading by title only.
Okay, seven thirty-three, Dot.
Seven thirty-three.
Delmer? Okay.
And vote.
Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
Rick?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Okay, here we go. An ordinance amending prior ordinances numbered six four two, which amended prior ordinance six two one. To provide for an improved fee structure to allow a more orderly prosecution and adjudication process. In cases of repetitive violations and further providing for the ratification and reenactment. Of all the other terms, conditions and provisions set forth within said ordinance six four two. And prior ordinance six two one, not amended by ordinance six four two. So a motion for a second reading.
A motion.
And Donny?
Donny gets the next one.
What?
Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
An ordinance amending prior ordinances numbered six four two, which amended prior ordinance six two one. To provide for an improved fee structure to allow a more orderly prosecution and adjudication process. In cases of repetitive violations and further providing for the ratification and reenact- and reenactment. Of all the other terms, conditions and provisions set forth within said ordinance number six four two. And prior ordinance six two one, not amended by ordinance six four two. Shall this, I need a motion or shall this bill pass?
I'll make that motion.
Donny?
Mm-hmm. David?
And David.
Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Donny?
Yeah.
Stacy?
Yes.
Bill has passed. Well, we're halfway there. Is there a motion for the introduction and first read by title only of bill number seven three four? I'll make a motion for first read of seven three four. Stacy?
I'll second.
Rick?
Rick is second.
Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
And then, an ordinance amending prior ordinance number six six eight. To provide for an improved fee structure to allow a more orderly prosecution and adjudication process. In cases of repetitive violations and further providing for the ratification and reenactment. Of all other terms, conditions and provisions set forth within said ordinance number six six eight. Is there a motion for a second read?
I'll make that motion.
I'm gonna be saying this.
Well, the second reading is seven thirty-four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Donny? Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Okay, bill number seven three four, send ordinance amending prior ordinance numbered six six eight. To provide for an improved fee structure to allow a more orderly prosecution and adjudication process. In cases of repetitive violations and further providing for the ratification and reenactment. Of the other terms, conditions and provisions set forth within said ordinance six six eight. Is there a motion for shall the bill pass?
A motion.
I second.
Rick and David. Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Bill has passed. One more. Okay, is there a motion for free, first read by title only for bill number seven three five?
Yep, I'll make that motion.
Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Donny?
Yeah.
Stacy?
Yes.
An ordinance amending prior ordinance numbered five four eight. To provide for an improved fee structure to allow a more orderly prosecution and adjudication process. In cases of repetitive violations and further providing for the ratification and reenactment. Of all of the other terms, conditions and provisions set forth within said ordinance five four eight. Is there a motion for the second read of title only?
I'll make that motion. Who's the second?
Delmer? Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Bill number seven three five, an ordinance amending prior ordinance numbered five four eight. To provide for an imposed, an improved fee structure to allow for a more orderly prosecution. And adjudication process in cases of repetitive violations. And further providing for the ratification and reenactment of all of the other terms, conditions and provisions. Set forth within said ordinance number five four eight. Is there a motion for shall the bill pass? Rick?
I second.
David? Okay, Dot?
Yes.
Delmer?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Donny?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
The bill passes. All right. All right, now we have a request. For the Eagles Mask to approve, to transfer the retail liquor license by the drink. And Sunday sales license to the new location at one sixteen North Broad Street. Is there a? Rick? Any discussions? All in favor? So carried.
They're working on their state.
Yeah.
Transferring, you know, has to do with being moved to a different location.
Yeah. All right. Set filing dates for the April seventh, two thousand twenty-six general municipal election. For mayor and one alderman for each of the three wards. To be December ninth, twenty twenty-five to December thirty, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion to set those filing dates?
Make the motion.
Delmer? Any discussion? All in favor? All right, motion carried. We have, I was contacted by Victory Roll Off Dumpsters. They would like to put a dumpster at the city barn for disposable of old appliances. There would be no charge for setting the dumpster. Would be for a period of two weeks, they would pick it up, weigh it, and based on the current metal rate. Victory will pay the city of Edina sixty percent of that rate.
So are TVs involved in that?
I think it's just appliances, but. Start.
Spring cleanup.
I've talked with Roger about it, if there's a big need for that right now, and he said. They can take that to the recycling and get a hundred percent of the cost.
Oh, city, I mean, we can't.
Yes, instead of.
Do that now.
Sixty percent, yes, that's what he said.
Everybody else has to get out of the city barn and throw it out.
Kind of like the chairs that I had, right? That looks the same deal.
So.
Right, we charge for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So he asked, and I told him, send a proposal and we can read it to the board, but right now, we don't. According to Roger, we don't have a need for that, but we kinda take care of that in-house.
All right.
I'd like to get rid of my TV that I broke.
Yeah, I don't know how.
Get a big trash bag.
Yeah.
And put a trash sticker on it.
There you go.
There you go.
Trash stickers don't cure everything.
Darn it.
All right.
Does it weigh over thirty-five pounds?
Oh, no, I don't.
Somebody could get it.
Do any of you fair aldermen have any comments? Other than a race to a drone?
A motion earned.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.